So I'm going to go ahead and call the Burke County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, February the 17th, 2015, to order, and welcome what folks are here, which is not many, and I don't blame them. If you would, please check your phones right quick, make sure all -- let me do mine real quick, because I was the one at Boo Boo's last time. Silence our mobile devices, and please be sure when you come up to the front, use the microphones for us. Tonight, we have Pastor Jesse Carl with us from Walker Road Baptist Church, who's going to do our invocation for us, and then, right after that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Britton will lead us in the pledge. So Pastor Carl, if you'll come on up and do our invocation for us, we would certainly appreciate it. Y'all will rise with me, please.
Let me begin by expressing my appreciation for the invitation to come and pray with you tonight. So let's pray together. Our Father in Heaven, we approach Your throne tonight through the mighty name of Your Son, the Lord Jesus. As we bow in prayer together, I am thankful that, in spite of my sins, which are many, I am welcome to call You Father, because Your Son Jesus willingly took my sins so I could take His righteousness. I rejoice tonight because I am welcome to live as Your Son, because Christ Jesus rose from the dead to give me His everlasting life. And so, I offer this prayer in His name, asking You to exalt His name in and around our great county. Lord, I pray You would work through these folks who are meeting together this evening, and use their efforts tonight to accomplish Your purpose in Burke County, just as You do in Heaven. Father God, You are righteous, and we are sinful, so we don't always seek to do Your will perfectly, but I am confident that Your sovereign pleasure is always greater than our short-sightedness. So, in Your grace, would You use the weakness of our plans to accomplish Your purpose. Father, I ask that You would work now in this meeting to make sure that the needs of the citizens, and the businesses, and employees of this county are provided for. Lord, we are thankful for those who act as Your servants by serving us in government, and I pray that You would give them tonight wisdom and skill. I'm thankful for those who serve us in civil departments, and I pray You would bless them in their diligence. And, Lord, I am thankful for those who serve us in police, and fire, and emergency services, and I pray they would be protected while they work, and provided for adroitly for their sacrifices. Most of all, Father, I want to pray tonight for the spiritual needs of our county that are always beyond the abilities of frail humans like us to meet. Father, You know better than we do that we need a spiritual revival, a gospel renewal in this county. There are many churches here, but, Lord, there's often little gospel influence. Father, there's a lot of Christian presence in our county, but sometimes very little Christian life. So, Father, we confess tonight that we have sinned with our fathers in not praying diligently, and loving radically, and preaching boldly, as You deserve. But we also pray humbly that You would now turn the hearts of Your people back to Yourself, and in doing that, we pray that You would turn this great county to Yourself. So I ask tonight that You would be glorified in Christ, through Your church, in this world, and in this county forever. Forgive us, Lord, of our many failures, economically, spiritually, and socially, and in forgiving us, make us a people who love others more than ourselves. And, Lord, since we are so prone to fall, I pray that You would keep us from temptation and deliver us from evil, so that we would be a people that pleases You. Father, we say this prayer tonight as we eagerly await the day when all the kingdoms of this world, including our country, and our state, and our county, are presented to You by Your Son. So we offer this prayer tonight in His name. Who lives and reigns with You in the Holy Spirit, One God, world without end. Amen.
Amen, and amen. You'll remain standing for the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much. Jeff, you want to go down and get your picture made?
That'd be okay, thank you.
All right, let's move on to item number four on the agenda, is the approval of the minutes, meeting minutes. And before us, we have January the 6th, 2015, our pre-agenda meeting, January the 6th, our recess meeting, and January the 13th, our Board of Commissioners' special meeting. I think we've had time to review those, so we'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard the motion by Wayne. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That will be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. You've got the agenda in front of you, and I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda without any changes.
So moved.
All right, you've heard the motion by Jack. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. It's five to nothing, Madam Clerk. We have no presentations tonight. Moving on to item number seven, is our scheduled public hearings. Our first public hearing is closeout of a public hearing for JAG 211 DJBX 2755, presented by Sheriff Steve Whistler. Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These grants take a long time to process and close out, so we're very glad to be able to close this out with a public hearing. This was a grant that we obtained in October 2011 for $10,081.34, purchased 10 tasers, holsters, batteries, and cartridges. That grant was approved by the commissioners. We purchased the tasers, and now we're closing it out to be able to get the county reimbursed for the amount of the grant.
All right, Madam Clerk, this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for JAG 211 DJBX 2755? Seeing, Madam Clerk, the public hearing is closed. Does anybody have any questions for the sheriff on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, just a curiosity, Sheriff, how often does your department taze anybody? Or have we tased anybody?
Oh, yes, it's -- I didn't look up those numbers, but it's probably not every week, but it's monthly that we're tasing people. And we feel like, really, those save lives in those situations. By the time it gets to taser use of force, many times it could be deadly force, so it's good to be able to have that tool and not have to use deadly force.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, Sheriff, hearing nothing else, we will accept your report, and no further action is required.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for everything that your staff has done during the day-to-day, because they've been everywhere. Yes, sir. All right, the next item is a public hearing renaming of the Morganton-Lenore Airport Avenue to Foothills Airport Road, and that will be presented by Scott Black, our GIS manager. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Carswell. Yes, so tonight, we're coming forward to have a public hearing. Foothills Regional Airport Authority has submitted a request to rename the road leading to the airport. The road is currently named Morganton-Lenore Airport Avenue. It is SR 1584, and the authority is proposing to change the name to the Foothills Airport Road. This change will affect the entire road, and once we have your approval of it, we will then submit the resolution to the DOT Board of Transportation for their approval. Since it is a state-maintained road, they have to sign off on it.
All right, Scott. Madam Clerk, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the renaming of the Morganton-Lenore Airport Avenue to Foothills Airport Road? Seeing, Madam Clerk, the public hearing is closed. Gentlemen, anybody have any questions for Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I don't especially have one for Scott, but since Wayne's on that board, I did want to ask. There was some conversation about improving that road. Has that been done, or is it on the?
They trimmed trees along the road. The road's not in bad shape. I mean, you know, they put up signage about two years ago, really nice signage when you come into the road, and they trimmed the trees. We had trouble with trees, but the road, I haven't noticed that it's got any potholes or anything.
The water came in a different way, though, didn't it? It didn't come along what they're proposing to change them. Is that correct?
But the road's in great shape. The road's in great shape, you know? The one good thing about this, there's not anybody affected by a different address or a different name, because there's no houses on that road at all, so.
Well, the reason I asked the question was that we used to get quite a few complaints because it's too narrow, and was hoping to widen it.
No, it's been done.
It has?
Yeah.
No other questions?
Anyone else? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the renaming of Morganton-Lenore Airport Avenue to Foothills Airport Road.
And to also adopt the resolution?
The resolution. Exactly.
All right. You've heard the motion by Wayne. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that will be five to nothing for the motion and the adoption of the resolution. Thank you, Scott. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up for informal public comments?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine is our consent agenda. At this time, I'll recognize County Manager Brian Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appears to be 11 items on the consent agenda. The first is clerk Anna Street CDBG progress report. Number two is county manager, approval of county management records retention schedule amendment. Number three, library, approval of deed combining properties for the Valdez Public Library. Number four, JCPC, removal and appointment of member to the JCPC. Number five, register of deeds retention schedule amendment. Number six, sheriff's office, approval of authorized signers for inmate trust bank account. Number seven, tax resolution establishing the 2015 Board of Equalization and review and appointing members. Item eight, tax order to advertise the 2014 delinquent real property taxes. Item nine, tax release refund report for January of 2015. Item 10, tax collection report for January 2015. And item 11, tax EMS collections report for December 2014. That concludes your consent agenda, sir.
Any questions for Brian on the consent agenda? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve all of the 10 items as presented.
Everyone's heard the motion by Manon. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That will be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Moving on to number 10, our items for decision. The first item up for decision, one moment, please. My computer moving, is the replacement of the ultrasound probe for the Health Department, presented by Rebecca McLeod, Health Director. Hey, Rebecca.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. The first item I have for decision for y'all is, we at the Health Department is asking for a replacement for our ultrasound probe. It broke back in April of 2014. It's very expensive. We went with a company to try to pay for the ultrasounds for maternity patients. They were not being reimbursed in a timely manner, so we asked the state if they could help us in buying a replacement. And the company that we bought the original ultrasound machine is Alcoa Hibachi. And in looking, we couldn't find another company that would do a replacement that was the exact same thing, that would be new. So we're asking tonight for sole source request for the Alcoa Hibachi to use their exchange and purchase for the ultrasound probe. And I'll answer any questions you have about it.
All right, gentlemen, we've heard the presentation by Rebecca. All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Health Department uses sole source bid exchange for purchase a new ultrasound probe from Alcoa Hibachi, the original company the ultrasound machine was purchased from.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that will be five to nothing. Thank you, Rebecca. We're moving on to the next item for decision, is primary care services, again presented by Rebecca McLeod, Health Director. Rebecca?
Thank you. For the second item on the agenda, just to let you know, as I spoke before, we do have a gap that exists in our primary care services here in Burke County. We do get calls anywhere from five to 10 per week for people who are not able to get access care for acute care. One of the things that we've been doing is working with Blue Ridge, Carolina's Healthcare System, Blue Ridge, for the past year, to look and see how we could actually leverage our resources and provide primary care to people who can't afford it, to keep them out of the emergency room. We came up with a proposal that I would like to present to you, and have presented at the pre-agenda, where we would utilize our own staff. Our enhanced role nurses would work people up who came to the front window who were sick with acute care issues. After they were worked up, we would have a virtual care. We would actually call down to Mountain Valley Health Center and say, "We have a person who's here who's sick. We're going to work them up." They will be presented virtually. They will talk to them over the computer, and then we will actually use a formulary through the hospital, I mean through Walmart, for $4 formulas for the prescriptions if they need them. And we would like to try this, because we did find out in December that for Title 10, which is our federal program with our family planning patients, that by July 1st, we have to assure or provide primary care services for family planning. And this is a way that we can actually keep it onsite, work it. It's not a lot of extra expense to the county. And what we're asking for tonight is for the commissioners to allow the Health Department to enter into a contract with Carolina Healthcare System, Blue Ridge, for the provision of primary care services for $12,500, which is 500 visits. And I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain questions.
All right, you've heard the presentation by Rebecca. Any questions regarding this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one. Rebecca, in this offering where you're open to 5 to 4:00 p.m. each day, and repetitive people, can they visit and come there as many times as they want to, or is there a limit? Or how do you, I guess, how do you audit and control that, too?
Anybody would be able to come between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00. We didn't say, well, we're there till 5:00, but you have to be able to finish them up. There is not a limit. It will not be free. It will be based on their income, and the least amount anyone would pay would be $50.
And can anybody come, even if they have insurance, or can go?
As long as they understand they'll have to pay, because virtual care at this point in time is not on any insurer's horizon. If we were able to, if we can show that we have enough people that they would put a person onsite, then yes, we would let them do their own insurance and file Medicaid. But even if they do have a third-party payer source, they're going to have to pay. We will not turn them away, though, as I have stated before, because we would turn them, if they don't make a payment in their three months, just like our other clinics, then we would turn them into our debt set-off program, where their income tax refund checks or their lottery earnings would be garnished.
The other one was, the other question, a final question, and I don't know if you can do this in our office, but it would be nice from me, and I think the other board members, could every quarter or so, we get a little report of how many people?
Yes, sir. I'll be glad to.
I think that would, that would help us a little bit, and I've already recommended somebody that it's going to be starting, so. They don't have insurance, and haven't seen a doctor in five years, and they've got some problems, and they need to see somebody, so.
Well, thank you for the opportunity if y'all do that, because there is a need in this county. And I would be glad to.
It's to be a burden, let us know. I mean, but it's, I'd just like to have a recap how effectively it's working.
We just tried to find a way that it wouldn't cost us a lot of money. It wouldn't cost the taxpayers a lot of money, because that's the one thing that I do try to do, because healthcare can be expensive, and we've tried to work out a way that it's not going to cost, because we're using existing staff, existing space. And we only pay for the visits. I think somebody asked at the last meeting, when we did pre-agenda, do we have to pay for all 500 visits? If we only have 400 visits, that's all we pay for. So we pay for it as we go.
Good. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Rebecca, what's the number-one benefit of the program?
To provide, to keep people out of the emergency room, and to provide them care when they're sick, acutely sick.
Mr. Chairman, Rebecca, do you have any idea, the folks that come into this clinic, you say the least they have to pay is $50. Well, if they don't have $50, what are we going to do?
Then we will turn them into our debt set-off program, because even though people are at the poverty level, they still have money, and it's just like our other programs we have, they still pay, because they're able to pay. If not, there will be a chance that we have to write it off. And we do that once a year with the Board of Health, and last year, we only wrote off around $6,000. We were able to bring in somewhere around $19,000 or $20,000 with our debt set-off program. But that's our one thing, is we do not deny them care. If we can provide it, we will do it, or we will refer them.
What kind of term are you thinking on this clinic? You've got, I think, a year contract, or six months, but what if, what if we see this is, you know, we can't do this? Are we obligated beyond this term?
No, sir, we're not obligated beyond a year, and it may be that I come back, if I come back quarterly and let you know what the numbers are, if you say, wow, you actually have 200 people that you've been seeing, you might, we might need to look at having a provider onsite. We might could actually do that. But if we say, nobody's coming, then I would come back to you, because we've been very frugal. We'd say, this did not work, because I have to also answer to the Board of Health, and they approve the concept, and I always have to go back to them also and say, if this does not work, let's try something else. So I will make that pledge to you, that we do monitor it, and it will not go into hole. That's all I have.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to allow the Burke County Health Department to enter into a contract with Carolina's Healthcare System slash Blue Ridge for the provision of primary care services for an annual fee of $12,500 for up to 500 visits.
All right, you've heard the motion by Manon. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. It'll be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving on to item number 11, our reports and comments. The first item is the acceptance of the medical director's report. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to read this report. I am not going to go through this, this report. It is just too lengthy, and there is just more accomplishments in here by our emergency services director. Seth has just done more, and he has more accolades here. If anybody wants to see a copy of this, we can go through, Madam Clerk, and we'll get them a copy, but it is just a significant accomplishment Seth has made as the director. So I would just ask that that report be accepted.
Mr. Chairman, I did have two questions.
Okay, go ahead, my friend.
I just wanted to know, because my wife is one of those that has to keep those EpiPens, do I understand from that report that anybody in the county can come and get that pen for And the other question was facetious. Where does a guy have time to sleep?
I don't know when the guy has time to sleep. It's unreal. The EpiPen thing, I recall reading it, but I don't know that I can give you an answer. I don't remember.
Okay.
Can I research it and get back to you?
Of course.
All right. Kay, you want to touch that, about EpiPens?
I was actually just going to remind you that we needed a motion.
Okay.
But I can ask Dr., the doctor, and get back with you.
It's in, actually, it's in the report there somewhere.
Yeah.
And I can't remember exactly where.
It's right on 11-1, or page 522 overall, the very top paragraph.
522. Let's thumb back up here right quick.
And depending where you buy them, you're supposed to keep two on hand, according to what the doctor told my wife. $250 at most places is what it costs for two doses. They expire after one year.
Mr. Chairman, if I might make a shabby attempt at answering that.
Okay.
Because I sit on the Quality Assurance Board, and I've heard this discussion. I think what he's getting around to there is, previously, EMS has had to use vials in vehicles that, or not vials, but these EpiPens that are very costly, and they expire and have to be thrown away. And the process now allows them to use vials that they can use with a normal syringe, and so it's not something that you can purchase. He's just trying to give you an idea of what their savings is to EMS for doing this.
One caught my eye on that. He said it could save tens of thousands of dollars every year.
It does, because of what we were having to throw away, because of the expiration of the EpiPen itself.
That's what it was. Exposure expiration dates on the EpiPen, and now with the vial, they can actually draw what they need out of, out of the vial and give the shot right there. And I'm going to assume that the vials last much longer than the EpiPen itself.
Yes.
Okay.
And if I might just expound further, on behalf of this board, I do sit on that review committee, and I'm just in awe each time when I hear what our folks are doing in EMS, and how, how we are on the cutting edge of a lot of ideas, and I'm just real proud of what our county is doing.
Absolutely. Like I say, if you read just the number of pages in here, you just, I'm kind of like Manon, I don't know when the guy sleeps, he does so much. All right, have a motion to accept this report.
So moved.
Yes.
All right. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item number two, is the county manager, the 2014 summary of accomplishments. And I'm sure County Manager Brian Stee's going to move right along with that one.
I'm feeling the draft.
Draft?
Yes, sir, I will be brief.
No, don't be brief. Do what you need to do.
This will be available for anybody that wants to read it at length. I'm sure we'll have this placed on our website. Of course, our IT director is experiencing the flu right now, but as soon as he returns, we'll try to have this on the website. First, let's see, you have economic development, recruitment, and expansion. CE Foam Solutions LLC brought 18 new jobs to the county. Grant funds of $20,000, one NC grant. There were additional benefits, $98,000 in new capital investment of a manufacturing facility at 502 Hole Street, Valdez, in which the company will manufacture flexible polyethylene foam. Rushaloo LLC, 100 new jobs, $500,000 in grant for building reuse, a million, almost a million-four project financing for the expansion and improvements of a 64,676 square-foot building at 9451 Nuvail Avenue in Hildebrand. So this is not nearly as exciting as the 2011 report we had on economic development, but those things, they come when they come. You do your best. It's like fishing, and sometimes you do well, and sometimes you, all you can do is try hard. Project Renew was still in progress, and they are starting their eighth class just this past January 2015. They've now served over 250 people since the program began in January 2012. Burke Emergency Communications Center, you're aware that we had started the construction in the 2013, and we've completed it in 2014, as well as implementing the actual consolidation of 911 services. I'll just click through some of the photos there. You remember having a ribbon cutting, an open house on June 20th of 2014. There's some different pictures of the ribbon cutting and the communications room. I think you remember, past meeting or two, I did make you aware that we are now capable of receiving 911 text messages. This is exceptionally interesting and important to our deaf community here in Burke County. They did not have the availability of this service prior to the consolidation and the ability through software to receive the text messages. We applied for Burke County to be recognized as a storm-ready county, updated the Viper MOA for Burke County, identified over 900 Viper radios used in Burke County, and created a database for accountability. Worked with State Highway Patrol to upgrade overcrowded Viper radio channels for Burke County responders, and in doing that, we partnered with Tava County and Codwell County as well, because some of these towers serve both counties. And by adding the channel, what we were experiencing is our responders, our deputies, our EMS would be in situations where they needed to talk, and they couldn't get an open channel because it was engaged. So by adding additional channel, we reduced the number of times they experienced busy signals, and they can make the contacts they need to, to carry out services. I'm going to go ahead and click through some of these others. Again, there's a lot that was done to facilitate the consolidation. There's a lot still ongoing, and they are doing a heck of a job with as many plates in there as they have to try and move the county forward for 911 communications. Community development, implemented a one-stop zoning and permit station, conducting an existing, or conducted an existing land use plan, obtained a grant from NC Park Service to do a study to extend the Overmountain Victory Trail from Morganton to Lake James, obtained a grant from the NC Park Service to do a from the NC Park Service to do a study to extend the Over Mountain Victory Trail from Lenord into Morganton, drafted a master plan for Lake James Loop Trail, acquired approximately 20 miles of easement on the Lake James Loop Trail, worked with the City of Morganton to transition a portion of their ETJ into the county's jurisdiction, worked with the North Carolina Department of Transportation to negotiate the rustic design for the Linville Bridge on Highway 126, implemented a new munis permitting software, assisted in broadband initiative with Burke County GIS, conducted a countywide survey of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, drafted a new Parks and Recreation Master Plan, contracted with Conley Springs to provide code enforcement and regulate zoning for their municipality. Emergency Management Fire Marshal procured a smoke detector grant through the North Carolina Department of Insurance Office of the State Fire Marshal. This grant provides smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors and smoke detectors for the hearing impaired to the citizens of Burke County. 171 smoke detectors, 13 carbon, carbon monoxide detectors and nine hearing impaired smoke detectors were installed in 2014. Procured a grant of $26,000 to conduct swift water boat operator training. The training was held May 25th through May 29th, 2014 in the Catawba River at the Bridgewater Hydro Plant. Procured a grant of $64,000 to conduct swift boat operator training and advanced swift water boat operator training classes. These classes were held in August and September of 2014. I believe I'm telling you right that in doing these trainings, we brought people from outside our county so they were going to our restaurants and they were probably in our hotels as well as coming to Burke County to, to get exceptional training and one of the rare places you can find swift water here in this area. Completed all universal objectives for North Carolina Department of Public Safety Emergency Management Performance Grant, which generated $35,000. Also completed an optional objective and generated an additional $14,680. Procured a grant in September 2014 through the Domestic Preparedness Region 8 and North Carolina Department of Public Safety Emergency Management Division for $60,000 to purchase a prime mover vehicle. This vehicle will be a 2015 Ford F-550 to be used to move trailers and haul items in the county during emergencies and disasters or assist other counties in the DPR 8 region. Also procured a grant in September 2014 through the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Emergency Management Training Division for $12,000 to conduct an active shooter exercise Began construction on the new EMS Base 7 at 615 College Street on the Burke-Morganton Senior Center property. As you're aware, the construction is pretty much been finished. They are currently finishing up a couple punch list items and that facility will probably go operational in the next two to three weeks at the latest. EMS purchased two 2014 F-350 four-by-four cabs and chassis and remounted units 16 and 21. Conducted EMS Awareness Day in the Roses Parking Lot during National EMS Week. Attendance was high with many children getting an opportunity to explore public safety vehicles and equipment. Contractually partnered with Blue Ridge Healthcare to transport patients from Valdez Emergency Department needing admission to the Morganton Campus. And they sponsored two special operations paramedics through Western Piedmont Community College, basic law enforcement training program. With their successful completion of the three-month course, these individuals became the first Burke County EMS tactical medics assigned to our local SWAT teams to be fully certified as law enforcement officers. Finance, converted Burke-Catawba District confinement facility, accounting records to county financial system, thereby eliminating duplicate software systems. General Services conducted and permitted, permitting of the new CD landfill expansion 1A. Began cap investigation of current CD over the municipal solid wastelandfill at John Rivers to begin closure of the current landfill. Completed sandblasting and painting of the Music Mountain Water Tank. Completed major repairs at the Music Mountain Water Tank following damage from lightning strike. Completed modifications to the landfill scale house to allow for a portable generator to run the house and scales following a prolonged power outage caused by severe weather. Health Department, the WIP Quality Improvement Project decreased overall time of annual certification visits from 75 minutes to 59 minutes. Family Planning Quality Improvement Project improved clinic flow by decreasing client visit times from 57 minutes to 50 minutes. Increased monthly clinic visits from 38 clients to 96 clients. And they averaged 76, I'm sorry, averaged 73 clinic visits a month from May to September. Completed, or completion and submission of action plan to Public Health Accreditation Board. I'm going to move on through some of these others. Human Resources, rolled out Burke County Employee Wellness Initiative, which includes health screening and health coaching for Burke County employees. This initiative is to help promote a healthy and productive workforce to serve the citizens of Burke County. They increased Burke County's overall culture of awareness rating through North Carolina Prevention Partners, work Healthy America Program by several grade levels. OSHR Delegation of Authority Agreement granting Burke County HR autonomy in administering the qualifications process for DSS and the Health Department. This allows HR to assist DSS and Health to decrease the time to hire by eliminating the need to send applicants to Raleigh for review and approval. Again, there are several things there in Human Resources. I want to move on to Information Technology. Deployed 44 iPads in DSS Northwoods Project. Deployed approximately 100 computers for various departments. Established a remote VPN connection for EMS and the Sheriff's Satellite Offices. They're in the process, as you know, of redesigning the county website and there's still some work to be done on that. Implemented Office 365. Moved critical email users to cloud service to allow for better protection of emails, records retention and e-discovery. Allows us to begin a standardization of Microsoft Office applications across the organization. Library had more than 1,500 participants in the Children's, Young Adult and Adult Summer Reading Programs. More than 38,000 items were circulated as part of these programs. And there you've got some picture of the Children's Summer Reading Program as well as Young Adult Summer Reading Program and the Adult Summer Reading Program. Library continued, implemented our second Dollar General Grant of $7,000 to promote literacy in our community, partnered with Literacy Council. Implemented the American Library Association Light the Way Grant, that was $4,000, to promote library services to hearing impaired children in our community. One grant was awarded nationwide. We partnered with the Public Schools and the North Carolina Schools for the Deaf. We received two grassroots grants from Burke Arts Council for the library programs. Art Expo, ASU Steel Drum Band and Taste of Culture retained an architect for the Coal House project in the Valdez Public Library. Worked with the Friends of the Burke County Public Library to raise over $12,000 from two annual book sales and ongoing inside the library book sales to support library programs, services and collections. Worked with the Friends of the Burke County Public Library and Library Foundation of Burke County to sponsor our third Burke Reads Community Reading Program. This year's book was The Book Thief. And they worked with the Library Foundation of Burke County on their year-end fundraising campaign. The campaign brought in over $20,000. Over the last 10 years, this annual campaign has raised over $255,000 to support a library programs, collections and services. Library staff conducted 1,178 programs last year with attendance exceeding 25,000 people. I'm going to move on. Again, there's, there's many things here in the library. Worked with Friends of the Library on the annual Arthur's Luncheon. Had 160-plus attend this event at Grace Ridge with Arthur and former WBTV news anchor Bob Enman. Again, there are many different things the library is involved in. But I think one of the things that's amazing is the number of volunteers and what they do to help our libraries, much like the volunteers in the Recreation Department. Without volunteers, we would be severely limited in our libraries and our recreation programs. Let me go on over to Cooperative Extension. Staff served 36,692 citizens through one-on-one interactions. Small groups are through one of the 208 educational programs that were provided. Another 20,391 citizens were reached through telephone, email and newsletters. In addition, with the use of radio, news articles and website, we were able to provide educational information and resources to an audience of more than 300,000 people. Cooperative Extension has a tremendous volunteer network as well of 1,917 volunteers contributing 15,288 hours of service, saving the organization and specifically the county approximately Again, without, without our volunteers, we would be severely limited in what we're able to provide to our citizens. Cooperative Extension, also 10,777 citizens have utilized recommended best management practices in landscape, gardens, pest management and pruning techniques. Nursery growers learned techniques to deal with existing and emerging pest problems, saving an estimated $867,000 in chemicals, labor and equipment cost. And of course, you know, the Cooperative Extension helps us with the Youth and Government Day and we will have that as well in 2015. Parks and Recreation, worked with Myron Stephens, Sports Medicine Manager and employee with the Carolina's Healthcare System to schedule a youth health fair to help screen youth for health conditions at Catawba Meadows. Get the Football Coaches Training Program Heads Up, sponsored by the NFL, and that's scheduled again in Burke County in 2015. Organize and conduct required attendance. Coaching clinic for all Burke County youth head football coaches addressing youth issues, health issues related to football practice and game situations. Initiated work with consultants at McGill Associates for Recreation Master Plan, completing a fence, completed a fencing project at Glen Alpine Park. Total project was $13,700. Completed multiple repairs and maintenance projects at other county parks. Register of Deeds, purchased a new wide format scanner and printer. This has significantly improved the quality of images captured. The scanner is used to capture images of Platts and old real estate records and will greatly aid in backfilling efforts. Sent two employees to the North Carolina School of Government for the Register of Deeds School. This will allow these employees to apply for certification for the North Carolina Register of Deeds Association. And initiated participation in the North Carolina Vital Records Electronic Birth Registration System. This service allows the Register of Deeds Office to certify out-of-county birth certificates. Sheriff's Department, sheriff tells me the crime rates declined for a third consecutive year and drug arrests have increased. The Sheriff's Office obtained 31 tasers through two separate grants. They worked with the school system to obtain a K-9 to enhance safety and reduce illegal substances and weapons in and around their schools. You have a picture of our K-9 officer and her black lab. Also a picture of the boat that the Board approved for purchase in our budget to patrol the county's two lakes and major rivers and work to prevent substance abuse through our school resource, community police and Special Operations Division. Sheriff's Department received budgeted authority and initiated online querying databases such as Leeds Online, checking scrap metal dealers and pawn shop records online utilizing remote video appearances from our detention center and Skyping within our conference room, preventing the need to travel to meetings, enhance our effectiveness and efficiency. Initiated in-service medical training accompanied with installation of defibrillators on each floor of the courthouse and accepted $200 contribution from Glen Alpine Elementary Student Government Council for use by the Sheriff's K-9 Unit in memory of fallen U.S. Forest Service Officer Jason Crisp and his K-9 Marros, who were both killed in the line Starting to worry about my battery and my clicker. Soil and Water 2014 has been a year of learning for the Soil and Water Conservation District as our longtime soil conservationists retired. They've hired a new Soil and Water Conservationist Travis Smith. Staff continues to be a part of the Hunting Creek Advisory Council to restore water quality in Hunting Creek watershed. Conservation education, presented conservation education programs to all 15 elementary schools and all five middle schools in Burke County. Hosted fifth annual environmental field days for all fifth grade students in Burke County. Partnered with Patton High School AP Science Students and the City of Morganton Parks and Recreation Department, reaching approximately 1,500 students during the two-day event. Sponsor a speech and essay contest and awards banquet each year for middle school students in Burke County. All five middle schools participated in this event each year. They did a cost share program, allocated $95,835 from the state of North Carolina to implement best management practices on local farms and urban lands. These funds were used to implement two stream restoration projects in the county as well as installation of fencing to keep livestock out of waterways, watering tanks, including one solar tank on multiple, multiple local owned farms. Through the federal cost share program, Environmental Quality Incentives Program, two contracts were implemented totaling $138,000 on Burke County farms. Also, the voluntary agriculture district, the district continues to administer the voluntary agricultural district program. There are currently 2,654 acres of farmland in the program across Burke County. Social Services, purchase of an electronic document imaging and management system software package through Northwoods Consulting Partners to replace the outdated and unsupported system. Veteran Service, hired new veteran service officer Valerie Kefir. Approved proclamation declaring Burke County as a Purple Heart County in North Carolina. Broadband Study, over 1,000 citizens participated in the broadband survey. To increase survey participation, videos were produced by Western Piedmont Community College, Burke County Public Schools and the City of Morganton to get the word out into the community to increase participation. We also established a map of areas and addresses in need of services based on the survey results. The inventory portion of the assessment, the central portion of the county along US or I-40 had relatively good broadband and infrastructure coverage. Northern and southern portions of the county had reasonable coverage but also had large holes of no coverage. The assessment found that although the central portion of the county along I-40 had relatively good broadband and infrastructure coverage, the lack of consistent broadband access in other regions is having a negative impact on all regions of the county. Identified and mapped vertical assets that could be used to expand the provision of broadband services. And gentlemen, that, that information is being used in bits and pieces at this time to try to begin the, the small steps it's going to take to, to get private service providers into these underserved or areas that aren't served at all. Again, this is done through private businesses doing this, so it takes them a little bit of time to go into these areas. Construction Projects, new jail. Authorized the manager to negotiate and execute a contract with him for randall. with Hemphill Randall Associates for Architectural and Engineering Design Services for construction of a new jail. Selected Vanoy Construction as construction manager at risk for the new jail. We also did an organizational restructuring as part of the adoption of the budget for And we put out some new signage there in front of our offices on 200 Avery Avenue and also the Burke County Courthouse. Miscellaneous, approved MOU offered by Burke County Public Schools for provision of a drug dog. Adopted resolutions establishing policy for unsealing closed-session minutes. Hosted classes at the Foothills Higher Education Center from the UNC School of Government. Held retirement reception honoring Libby Cooper, Register of Deeds, for her many years of service in Burke County. Approved the appointment of Laura Anderson as Register of Deeds effective January 1st, 2015. Developed and approved the Regional Jail Facility Closing Agreement with Catawba County, which sets forth the terms and conditions for closure of the Burke-Catawba District Containment, Confinement Facility upon construction of our new jail here in Burke County. Approved cooperative agreements with U.S. Department of Interior and National Parks Service for a master plan for the non-motorized pathway of the Overmountain Victory National Historic Trail. Initiated an RFP and selected a consulting firm. Implemented the clerk, you want to pronounce that for me? About your IQ M2.
It's MinuteTrack.
All right.
IQ M2 MinuteTrack Agenda Management Software.
Received approval of $100,000 grant from Golden Leaf Foundation for the Broughton Hospital Facility Use Study for the possible redevelopment of the historic Broughton Hospital. Approved development incentive grant, DIG agreement between Alpine Mill LLC, Burke County, and the City of Morganton for renovations and reuse of the abandoned manufacturing plant located at 109 East Fleming Drive for a mixed-use development project. Approved purchase of real property for NC-18 South Convenience Site. Approved request to waive landfill tipping fee for inert vegetive debris caused by the June 10th storm for all county residents excluding commercial contractors. You adopted 25 resolutions, seven proclamation, 10 ordinances, and proved 103 board appointments. You had a busy year, Mr. Chairman. The Conference Center received over $28,000 in rental revenue for 2014. Granted authorizations to the manager to waive fees for certain government-related events scheduled at the Foothills Higher Ed Conference Center. Annual events include gun shows, this is the first gun show we had in this past year, health fair, bridal fairs, job fairs, proms, galas, bridge tournament, and veteran services events. And that concludes the summary of accomplishments for 2014, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody got any questions or comments for Brian? So Brian, I only have one comment. I don't know how we did it all.
Yeah. Again, that's the summary. We pick and go through what's submitted to us by the different departments, but it is a summary and I apologize for being a bit rushed, but I know we need to move on.
No, it wasn't rushed and we thank you for that presentation. All right.
Motion.
Need a motion to receive Brian's report.
Come on in.
All right, we heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you so much. At this time, we will receive comments from the Board. Let's start over with our attorney.
Just a thank you to the Board and to county staff for the great outpouring of support that you gave to my family and me on the death of my father. I appreciate all those who came to the receiving or the funeral and who have sent cards and letters and given words of encouragement. It's really meant a lot to our family and I'm very thankful to work with a group of people like the Burke County Commissioners and staff.
Brian, anything else?
No, sir.
Wayne?
I'll comment.
Minor.
Mr. Chairman, just a thought for our viewers and for our citizens. Our agenda package, if you read the entire thing, was 560-plus pages. Now about 400 of those pages had to do with the tax reports and tax returns. And I'm not about to tell you that I read every line, line by line, Johnny, but I did, I did scan most of it and it was just a lot of information this time. And to facilitate all this that we do, it's just a major undertaking, seems like every one. Appreciate the good work of the clerk and all our leaders and department heads that made it possible.
Amen. Jeff?
Mr. Chairman.
Jack?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple comments. I've been receiving a lot of comments from people around Lake James about the shooting range. And I, you all have too, I suppose. The location where they have it now, I don't agree with it. A lot of people don't support that because of where it's located around Lake James and there's a lot of issues there. And it have a lot, I feel it have a lot of effect on people living in and around that lake area there, impacting wildlife around there. And I think it's a better place or should be a better place in the county to locate that facility other than that. I'm not opposed to it at all. I think it's a good thing because it gives us one facility which we need very badly to where some of us people can go and under supervision and safety to fire their weapons or learn how to operate a firearm. I don't know how the Commissioners feel about it, but I'd like for you to consider, let's do a resolution asking the Wildlife Commission to at least search out and look for another location that would suit what they want to do out there. Because I don't know, where I live, we have shooters around there. Of course, in Burke County, ordinances really don't work because of people shooting on their own property, which they have a right to do, I understand that. But a lot of people don't take into consideration neighbors where they're shooting at. And we have pets that are deathly in fear of firearms when they go off and people shooting around residence areas. But I think at least we need to talk to the Commission, the people in the Commission, and ask them, you know, to do a search for another place, how they feel about it before we go into this or support it or oppose it. Because once you put something like that in place, it's going to be there for a long, long time. And you know as well as I do, it's hard to change anything like that if there's issues with it after the fact. So I would just ask for your consideration that we take a closer look at this before, you know, the time ends. I mean, I don't know, I guess all of you got the notification they have a public hearing tomorrow evening, I believe, over Tacoma. I guess it's still on.
No, that's, that date has been changed to March the 3rd, isn't it?
March the 3rd?
I know it's in March, but it's.
March 3rd, I believe it is, Jack. We just got notification today and we, you know, if I may piggyback right quickly, we've been telling everybody about that change of the date, so.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. But anyway, I'd like for us to consider that or take, you know, more interest in it and see what the real issue is out there. Because me, I would never purchase a piece of property within five or 10 miles of firing range because you know as well as I do, you're dealing with firearms as you how that, you know, there's a lot of issues when firing weapons, there's safety issues, and also disturbance within the community. So I just ask for you, you know, we do a little bit more there.
All right.
On this issue. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. I'd just like to report that Vice Chairman Abley completed his two clock hours of ethics training in accordance with general statutes.
Congratulations.
That's hard to sit through anyways. For my remarks tonight, I would just like, Brian, if you'll let our county workers know that how much we appreciate what they did today during our little snowstorm. They, I stopped by and watched a lot of people shoveling. Keith, especially at his age, may do want to slow down a little bit, but we, a lot of good work done to make sure that our county offices were open in time today. And I would like for you to recognize those folks for an outstanding job. Also, our DOT in Burke County did a terrific job to get these roads open. Now, I don't know what we'll have in the morning. Our Sheriff's Department was right on call for anything that was going to happen and we do appreciate them for that. So that's all the comments I have for right now. We do have a need to go into closed session to discuss threatening or pending litigation to preserve the attorney-client privilege. I'm so sorry, I did it again. Let's have the vacancy announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We have.
I would like to move that up to the number one item if we can.
Is that a gurra cowbell?
Yeah.
Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, City of Morganton ETJ, Voluntary Agriculture Board, Library Board of Trustees, Burke County Parks and Recreation Commissions. We're also announcing the following state vacancies. North Carolina Museum of Art, the Cemetery Commission, the Environmental Management Commission, and North Carolina Finance Agriculture Authority.
And again, I will, for those people watching us by TV, please take advantage of these volunteer committees, we need you to do that. Now, let me go back in again and start over that we do have a need for a closed session to discuss threatened or pending litigation to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss economic development matters and to discuss personnel matters as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Paragraph A, 3, 4, and 6. And I will like to invite Paul Limes and Mike Watts to the closed session. Gentlemen, we want to take about a five-minute break before we go into closed session. All right, five-minute break and then we'll move into closed session. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? Okay, get that, Madam Clerk. Thank you so much. What's more about here? Oh, yes, it is. All right, we had a proper motion to come out of closed session. No action was taken. I declare us in recess until February 27, 2015 at 8:30 a.m.